Council will begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening we'll begin with a public forum and then followed by two public hearings, one on the ordinance having to do with impact fees and one on the adoption of the Newmarket and Hampshire multi-hazard mitigation plan. So I begin with, are there any, anybody that would like to make comments during the public forum? Seeing no one, we close the public forum at 7:01. And is there anybody here that would like to make comment relative to ordinance number three, 2018, 2019, and which is an amendment to chapter thirty-two zoning, section thirty-two, two thirty-eight, impact fees of the municipal code of the town of Newmarket and zoning ordinance adopted two fourteen nineteen ninety-six as amended through October eighteen twenty seventeen? Seeing none, is there anybody here? We close that public hearing and move on to resolution twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen dash forty-five, adoption of the Newmarket, New Hampshire, multi-hazard mitigation plan update. Is there anybody with comments on that? Seeing none, we close the final public hearing at about seven oh two. So then we move on to consider, I would welcome a, uh, uh, a, a, a motion, thank you, to adopt, to approve the March twenty eighteen, March twenty eighth, twenty eighteen regular meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the March twenty eighth, twenty eighteen regular meeting minutes.
Second?
I'm trying to find which one it was, sorry.
Okay, that's, and I'll tell you that that is page one nineteen if you're looking for it.
Yeah, I got a small correction as well.
Okay.
So page one nineteen is where it starts.
Where it starts, that's right.
So sorry.
That's a fairly lengthy packet. We're making good time, so don't, don't feel too worried. Did you have a, did you have some?
Yeah, I'm finding it, I, okay. Just waiting for it to load. All right, here we go. Um, I can't search this packet, which is handy.
Minor to the next ones, sorry.
Under, under committee reports, it would be page one twenty-three, line number two fifty-nine. The Piscassic River Luizel property kiosk sign is finished and it will be installed. That's going to be installed this Saturday. Um, but yeah, it says it's installed, it has not gone up yet, but this Saturday it will. So will, will be installed.
Right, but it certainly wasn't installed on March twenty.
No, no.
Okay, with that correction, I think we can go ahead and approve the minutes, call the roll, please.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, nothing.
Okay, and then I would accept a motion to approve the April fourth, twenty eighteen regulation, please.
I'll make a motion to approve April fourth, twenty eighteen, regular meeting minutes.
Second?
Counselor Cast, you had a correction for that one?
Yes, so page one thirty-two, line seventy-eight.
Line seventy-eight.
Correct. Uh, it's a school resource officer instead of research.
Oh yes, good catch.
That's a good one.
Uh, on line seventy-eight, where it says school research officer, the word research should be resource. No problem, it's only because that's a specific kind of officer.
Anything else? If not, please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Abstain.
Counselor Dumont.
Abstain.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Chairman Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes four, one, two.
And seeing that the town administrator is not here, did you have any comments to be made instead on the, on the report?
I do not, um, he submitted his written report as part of the council packet.
Right. Anybody else have any questions or anything else that they wanted to raise at this time? No, uh, the town administrator is not here or any of the department reports. Seeing none, does anybody have a committee report?
Slow month.
What's that?
I said slow month.
Slow month. Yeah, I don't, there would nothing, uh, okay, we move on to, um, so is, is pretty much everybody here is for the resolution twenty seventeen eighteen dash forty-four, the purchase of the Tucker property, is that what? Does anybody have a problem with doing this out of order and moving on to that resolution first? Where are the audiences here?
That's right.
And that's on page two twenty-one. Thank you.
Is that true of the other people?
Uh, nobody did other than nod when I said that. I suppose Diane would be the exception, if you will.
I'm definitely good.
Because I think your, it's all touches you too anyways, right? That's the nature of your job. Um, okay, could I have, let's see, can get it to the right page as I said?
Two twenty-one.
Two twenty-one. One way off here. Okay, um, could I have a resolution to approve resolution, could I have an emotion to approve, excuse me, resolution twenty seventeen eighteen dash forty-four, which is the purchase of the Tucker property for conservation purposes?
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen dash forty-four. Second?
Okay, so is, uh, this was, the, the staff report on this was prepared by you, Drew. Do you want to start off with making comments?
Sure.
Great.
Yeah. Good evening, Drew, key favor of fifty. Elm Street, Newmarket, New Hampshire. Uh, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. Patrick Reynolds is here also, Patrick is another member of the Conservation Commission. Dwayne Hyde is from the Southeast Land Trust and Valerie Shelton is here as well. Valerie is representing the seller of this property. So, quick overview, um, this property was formerly owned by Don Tucker. Don Tucker was a member of the Conservation Commission for a number of years. After he passed, the property went to his estate. This particular property abuts other conserved lands and is something that he had spoken of as having a desire to have conserved, but was not something that was able to be achieved prior to his death. We have been, we, the Newmarket Conservation Commission in, uh, working with the Southeast Land Trust have been communicating to the property owners related to this property. We've sort of made a, an arrangement to figure out a way to conserve this property, um, and so that's what we're here to ask you about and talk to you about. So to, to give you a little bit of background, it's actually two pieces of property. Do you, do you folks have the maps?
Yes.
And if not, I can hand some out. So the property is essentially at the end of Neil Mill Road. Again, it's really two pieces of property, one piece is a little over fifteen acres. Much of that property is wetland, um, because it drains from the Southeast Land Trust property kind of through this property, then the water goes under Neil Mill Road. If you're familiar with Neil Mill Road, it goes under Neil Mill Road, um, about a hundred yards before the gate at the end of Neil Mill Road where there's sort of that low point. And then the property, um, drains along and through, uh, another property and then finds its way to the Piscassic River, which then, you know, feeds down through town.
Right, Drew, can I just ask you for purposes, I don't know what you chose on here, how close is this to where the property is being purchased for the, for the Tucker well that's...
So, it's across the street, so the, so this is the property that's being discussed here. The Tucker well is a property across the street and separated on the other side of the Piscassic River. So relatively close, but not, not abutting.
Yeah. It's one parcel removed.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's one parcel removed. So, as we've structured it currently, the proposal is the, um, town and Southeast Land Trust will buy the property, assuming that it has an appraised value somewhere between one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, which we certainly expect that it will. If the appraisal is above a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then the landowner will do a bargain sale at the hundred and seventy thousand dollar level. The funding for the property would come from essentially primarily, I should say, two sources. One is the Town of Newmarket Conservation Fund. The Conservation Fund would be contributing up to one hundred and five thousand dollars towards this acquisition. The other major funding source would come from the Wetlands Reserve Easement Program, which is a federal program. And Southeast Land Trust has done a number of these easement projects, so they would do the, the legwork of applying for this easement, getting the easement. Uh, the easement would actually be put on the property by the current landowner and then the property would be transferred to the Southeast Land Trust with the easement already on it. Again, as structured, the proposal is that the Southeast Land Trust would ultimately own the property and the town of Newmarket would have an executory interest in the ownership. So if for any reason the Southeast Land Trust or any of its successor organizations were to give up the property or no longer have an interest in the ownership, that ownership would revert back to the town. The reason that we've structured it that way is that, um, because the property is for conservation, conservation organizations like land trusts do a better job of providing stewardship for conservation lands than municipalities and their associated conservation commissions. So this is a way to assure the long-term proper stewardship of the property. Southeast Land Trust is interested in, in, um, participating in this because they own an abutting property, and so it's relatively easy for them to, you know, have this property in essence joined, if you will, or when someone's going out to do the, the monitoring of the property, they can monitor both properties and, and it's a, you know, it's a little bit easier in that regard. Also because it drains from the current Southeast Land Trust owned property through this one, it provides, um, you know, continuation of the, of the water cleansing that happens through conservation lands and the, and the drainage through the soils. So it's a, it's a good project from that perspective. Um, and then the other part is there's also a small parcel associated with this project. It's about three quarters of an acre, it has a little tiny bit of frontage along the Piscassic River. Uh, for anyone who's familiar with Old Lee Road, uh, if you go out Neil Mill Road, you go past the gate, you take the first left, that is Old Lee Road. If you go down that road, you'll come to a bridge that's, uh, in, in some disrepair, but still very usable for pedestrian traffic and, and, you know, snowmobiles, et cetera. If you cross that bridge, on the left-hand side, there's a thin strip of property that's also owned by the Tucker Estate that would be included in this acquisition. Um, it's a, it's sort of an orphaned chunk of land in that it, it does not have any frontage on a, on any road, you know, it's, has frontage on a class six road, so it's not a buildable lot. So it's sort of a little strange lot, if you will. And so having it conserved would be a good thing. It does abut, um, property that currently has an easement on it, so it would be, you know, joining, it would be abutting another property that has the easement, conservation easement on it. And that abutting property abuts the portion that the town is buying for the well.
What's, what's the purpose of that, that abutting property that's between the town, what's the town's purchasing and what we're talking about here, is that just a residence place?
Yes, yep, that's a residential piece of property, yep. Yep. And the, the town owns the easement on that property. That property was conserved as part of the Open Space, um, Commission in, I'm gonna guess two thousand and five, somewhere in that sort of time frame. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I, I'll make, go ahead.
Oh, no, I, go ahead.
For sure?
Yep.
Um, so my only question is about the, um, the Conservation Fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
So it says it's two forty-eight.
Yeah, I can speak to that. It's actually two ninety-four.
Two ninety-four, that's awesome.
Yes.
But I'm curious if you are looking at any other properties and how, you know...
At, at this point, we are not, no.
Okay.
Yeah. And the, the, um, part of the reason for the two forty in the information that you received and, and the two ninety-four that I'm saying now is, one, ignorance on my part. When, when I wrote this up, I, I knew that we were over two hundred and wasn't exactly sure where we were. Um, so I think there's an approximately in front of that. Um, but there's also been a number of deposits because we've had some recent land use change tax assessments in town, and so that has helped also increase the, the amount. And I know at our meeting last Thursday, two hundred and ninety-four thousand was the, was the number. And there, you know, there's some, there's numbers behind that as well that I don't, I don't know what those are.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have several, but I'll go one at a time and see what.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So the, um, the funding is seventy K from Southeast Land Trust, right? And a hundred and five proposed for the town.
Yep.
Um, and I see that that basically covers the high end of the, of the, uh, anticipated value.
Correct.
Um, how would that work if it happens to be less?
So, and, and jump in if I misspeak here, Dwayne. So essentially the, the Wetlands Reserve Program has a set dollar amount that they will provide for an easement on a property, and it's on a per acre basis. So, so there's a, a well-defined and finite amount of money associated with that. So if the appraisal comes in substantially lower, then essentially the Conservation Commission would be contributing less to the project.
So the expectation is the town's contribution is fixed, right? That's what we're...
There's, yeah, there's a not to exceed, I believe.
Not to exceed, but, um, that's what I was trying to figure out. So the, the, the easement slash Southeast Land Trust piece would be, cover less, would be the one that would be less?
No, other way around.
The other way around.
So the, so the southeast, so the, really the, the main portion from the Southeast Land Trust is that, that they're gonna work on this Wetlands Reserve easement.
Yes.
And, and receive, well officially, the property owner will receive that money and consider it as part of the purchase price. So, assuming that that amount is a constant, because it's paid on a, on a per acre basis, you know, it's the same dollar per acre.
Yep.
So assuming that remains the same, if the appraisal comes in lower, then, then the Conservation Commission would kick in less.
Okay.
Because the overall project cost would be reduced and the Southeast Land Trust, uh, efforts and contributions would be the same dollar value.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Drew, can I add one, one item too? I think it may have been an error in the, in the resolution and, that I didn't catch. And just so you know, the Southeast Land Trust is bringing a little over a hundred and two thousand dollars to the, to the project, maybe the budget, you may have received a copy of the budget and made that connection. The roughly seventy thousand dollars from the Wetlands Reserve easement program, almost nine hundred, nine, nine thousand dollars will be applying to the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership for funding, and then twenty-five thousand dollars in private funds. So it's about a fifty-fifty split between the town and Southeast Land Trust.
And, and I guess related to that, it's worth saying, so the, so the hundred and seventy purchase cost is the purchase cost, assuming it's a hundred and seventy. The other expenses are long-term easement stewardship funds, closing costs, uh, things associated with actually making the deal happen. All of those things cost money, of course.
Do you have another question?
Mm-hmm. So, um, what would be the, the access or usage for town residents since I think you said that the Southeast Land Trust would ultimately be, be the owner?
Yep, so it would be open for public access.
Okay. I, I think I saw the phrase passive recreation or, like, can you characterize what, what type of usage would be expected or just people going on walks, no hunting, I mean, just looking for what...
Yeah, sure, sure. Um, so it, it depends somewhat on the easement language, but I think in general, it would be safe to say, um, non-motorized access is, you know, so walking, skiing, uh...
I was gonna give, the, the comment I was gonna make is I was on the, uh, New Fields to Manu- Manchester Rail Trail once, and I came across this side trail that went up and I said, huh, that's interesting, where does this go? And I rode up in there and it was just like meadows and wetlands, it was really beautiful and it went on and on and I thought, this is amazing that it's here and I really didn't know it was here, but it, it's, it's really...
That's incredible.
So I'm, I'm thrilled that, that it's being made larger and more whole in terms of the preservation of the wetlands and it really, it's not easy to get to, but if you should find yourself out there, it's, it's lovely and it feels like it's, like it always has been out there.
And so related to hunting, uh, I would say hunting is permitted within other regulations, i.e. there is a homeowner that has a house out at the end of there, so, you know, safety zones obviously are still gonna apply, you know, things of that nature. Dwayne, do you, do you have anything in addition?
You hit it all. Yep, it will be open for hunting and fishing and pedestrian access, yep, non-motorized.
So to that point, I don't know if there's already trails, would there be development of trails or as part of the, or would the aim of conservation kind of limit that?
There, I, I would say it's not excluded, although there, correct me if I'm wrong, although at this point there isn't any explicit plan there. Part of that is due to the amount of wetlands that's in the area.
Yeah.
So...
Silence is more towards snowmobiles because...
Is that right?
Because of, you know, the expectation that it will freeze up.
And there is, um, you know, Neil Mill Road becomes a class six road very near this property, which means there's a gate and the town cannot maintain the road at that point. Um, and so that, at, at that point, it's, it becomes a, a double wide trail, you know, people walk on it, run, mountain bike, snowmobiles, cross-country skiing, and that goes through the, um, the Piscassic Greenway.
Right. Yeah, the Piscassic Greenway, which Southeast Land Trust owns, which you've visited and glad to hear enjoyed, is about four hundred and fifty acres currently and has a, a very nice well-signed trail network on it. Uh, it's worth noting, uh, that we are working on the permits right now, I think we may even secured the, the permits from DES for a trail, uh, crossing of a large beaver dam area that's gonna connect up with what Neil Mill Road. So there is, although this property won't have a trail, there will be access, improved access from the Neil Mill Road area into, uh, for Newmarket residents and anyone else to access the Piscassic Greenway. So we hope to have that done, uh, this year.
Is it Beaver Dam?
But no, no particular plans for actual trails on this property, but we do have those plans nearby.
Okay.
Can I, oh, good.
Is it Beaver Dam you're referencing on the west side?
It would be the east, uh, wait, no, west side, correct, yep, yep, sorry.
So my navigation skills are poor, um, so, but you, so you can access this property from the, from the rail trail?
Yep. Yeah, draw, Halls Mill and Neil Mill basically connect.
Doesn't, this property doesn't abut the rail trail, but you can eventually get to...
To the green.
At one point in time.
If you get out there, you'll see this point where there's a clear trail that go, you know, at that point, it's a substran- substantial trail heading north from the rail trail. And as you go up there, you're gonna...
We're gonna have to have a field trip.
I think so.
We're always looking to do field trips, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna write it down, we'll make sure we put those noted by.
You know, it's really kind of one of the, the things that's really wonderful about Newmarket, if you, if you look at that set of wetlands and trails and land that, that is in conservation, and if you also go up and look at the Sweet Trail and the area down to Great Bay, if you look at those, those are really jewels on either end of the track, really nice.
Yes. One, one other thing I will say is, um, one thing that we'll probably need to look at is some sort of, uh, either drainage or some sort of improvement at the end of Neil Mill Road to provide a space for people to pull off to the side of the road to be able to leave a vehicle there, um, and not have it be on the, the homeowner's property that lives there and not block the gate, because the gate at the end of Neil Mill Road is not to be blocked, uh, you know, it should be accessible for emergency vehicles if they're needed there. So right now it's a, it's a little muddy on the side of the road there, um, and so that, that's realistically something we, uh, we'll, we'll have to probably take some sort of look at to, you know, make sure people aren't getting stuck in a ditch and tearing it up and then sending silt into the waterway that we're trying to protect by conserving this property.
Is that a private road or...
No, it's a public road.
It's a public road?
Yeah.
I have more questions.
Go ahead, you have more, please.
Um, I was reading through and I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the relationship of the easement with the NRCS, I think is the entity.
Sure.
And I saw wording talking about how they help, help to conserve. Is that part of this arrangement, or is the easement just to arrange the funding? Or how does that, that all work?
I'll, I'll do my best. I think I understand your question, but if I don't answer it, please, please let me know. So the Southeast Land Trust actually secured a dedicated amount of money for projects that met certain criteria from N R C S through its Wetlands Reserve Easement Program, which is W R E P.
Can you say what N R C S is?
Yep, the N R C S is a federal program under the Department of Agriculture. It's the Natural Resources Conservation Service. So that program is about, well, the funding that we were able to secure through that program and direct landowners to, uh, was geared toward protecting conservation-focused areas that were identified in the Coastal Conservation Plan and protecting rare turtle habitat, which this property also has. So we, we worked with the, we actually submitted the application. Val earned her keep working on that with me and the, the landowner. We submitted the application just on Friday of last week, or Monday of this week. Uh, can't remember, I had two batches. So that program will go through and rank the project, and I predict select the project, and then fund the acquisition of the conservation easement by the N R C S. So the actual conservation easement will be held by the federal agency, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and they will be paying roughly seventy thousand dollars for that conservation easement. Then we, working with the town and then us raising some additional money, will acquire the property subject to that easement to round out the purchase, the overall purchase price, which will fall between one fifty and one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Does that make sense?
Well, I was wondering about the part that I saw, which sounded like that, that that agency would then be actively involved in some of the conservation activities for the property?
Yes, that, uh, that, yep, good, I, I understand your question now. They, they, as part of this program, they are actively involved in doing wetland restoration work, trying to improve habitat on the property. So we, I will be having a site walk with one of their biologists or, or easement program managers, and we will look for restoration opportunities to improve habitat on the property. And they will undertake that work, usually in our first year of ownership, and, uh, and, and pay for the cost of that restoration.
That was what I wanted to know.
There you go.
They take care of it. Even though they're providing the funding?
Yep, it's on top of the funding. So it doesn't come off the, off the top of that funding or anything. They have dedicated funds to pay for that restoration as part of the program. So they may do some, they may do some clearings in, in an area that maybe they find an area where turtles are, are nesting, and they want to improve the nesting habitat. That's an often, uh, a type of improvement.
Is that the Blantings turnoff?
Yes.
Yes.
So does that, that help?
Yeah.
Great.
Do you have another?
It just went right out of my head. I just found this very, I, I don't know how, I, I mean, I don't know who came up with the, the whole idea of the easement, and it seemed very creative to bring all this together this way. So whoever kind of put that together, my compliments.
That's Duane. And, I mean, uh, almost all conservation, um, properties like this require this sort of combination of, there's a little bit of public money, there's some municipal money, there's different, you know, there, there's a variety of different funding sources, and it's a matter of figuring out which ones are applicable and having the ability to apply for and actually receive those grants, because they're all, they're all competitive grants. And then, you know, kind of pulling all those pieces together to, to make it happen. It's, it's very rarely a, a single source, I guess is the way to say it.
Yeah, I got another one.
Go for it. There is nobody else I don't...
All right, um, I think from the one interest, uh, one thing of great interest probably to the town in this arrangement would be, um, you know, helping to protect the water sources for the town. And, um, I didn't know there was a beaver, beaver dam. I don't know how big that's going to be. My understanding is that can be a significant factor in helping to maintain water quality, besides the wetlands themselves. But I don't know if you can comment on that.
Yeah, so the, the areas that are marked in green, on the, in the dark green?
Yeah.
Are prime wetlands. And so a lot of this property, or, you know, a center portion of it, is a designated prime wetland. There, I don't think there's actually any beaver dams on this property. But there are upstream, a series of dams. Because, you know, that's kind of how the beavers do it. They dam up somewhere, and then the children are born. The children get kicked out, and so they move either downstream or upstream until they find another spot and say, hey, this would be a good spot to have another dam. And so that's, you know, that's how those wetland complexes grow so large.
Exactly. The network of beaver, beaver work. But going back to the water quality, can you, do you have any other, um, more details or comments or observations on that aspect of it for the town?
Well, maybe I can ask it, so...
Sure.
Go ahead.
... question to that, because I, I would, I, I'm on this groundwater, so I've learned a little bit through that, which is always dangerous, but let me take a stab. Because the Tucker well that we're talking about is a bedrock well. It's not a, you know, overground like the, the, so it's not like it's a direct aquifer over it that's, that's supplying that while it's coming in through bedrock. And bedrock can come from some distance. So, you know, you, you're always careful with the, with how land is used over where your well is located, but it's, it, it's not like what we have out on, like, one fifty-two. We're, we're very concerned because it sits directly over this gravel area, and everything that goes down there, we know goes into the, the body of water that makes up the well. This is much more complex than that. There's fracturing that goes on, and we, you don't really know how the water gets there. The water is really important because it's, it's the, it's a watershed, and it goes into a wild and scenic river waterway. Is that a fair way of state what's going on? Diane, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that because the Tucker well has been permitted by the State of New Hampshire Environmental Services, but they do have requirements for source protection around wells. And one of the things is if there's a four-hundred-foot radius around the perimeter of the well that cannot be built or developed precisely for the reasons that, correction of this question.
But this is a lot bigger than that, right?
Right, but I'm just saying that there are other mechanisms out there that are doing what is being questioned here.
I think I just ran dry, so, if anyone else has questions, go for it.
There are no other questions.
Yeah, well, the only other thing I would add related to water quality is, in general, for municipalities, if we can have wells that have clean water, that is substantially less expensive than having surface water that we need to treat. Because the additional treatment that is required requires A, space, and B, facilities, and C, chemicals and/or processes to do that, and that, that is more expensive. So we are very fortunate in many ways in New Market that the majority of our, if not all of our municipal water comes from wells. It's a, we're, we're able to save money because of that.
So I, I wasn't aware until it was presented how much abutting conservation land. And I, can you speak to, um, the significance of putting this piece into the whole picture of abutted conservation lands? Is it, I mean, it's only fifteen acres, but...
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Sure. It, um, I guess what I would say is, in general, conservation organizations look to try to establish larger pieces of property as conserved areas whenever possible. That allows habitat to, to be on a larger scale. It allows flora and fauna to, to be able to move around in that property and not become an island. So although this is a relatively small piece of property, because it abuts other conserved properties, it helps make that whole area a, a little bit larger. And so there's, there is value in that beyond just the fifteen acres in and of itself, I would say. Does that, does that help answer your question?
And if I can just add to that, the, what really highlights, and as, as I stated earlier, I, I did the abutting piece with Don Tucker when he was alive, just a little bit before he passed. And he was a great man, and, uh, you know, I wish I could have gotten this one done with him before he passed. And one of the things that we talked a lot about was that stream, you know, that passes through this property that eventually goes into the Piscassic River. And that, that the wetland system and that stream are, are important to protecting the water quality of the Piscassic River and potentially the well that the town has or will have over there. And the other important that Drew hit on is that what we're learning more and more in, in conservation biology is that these stream systems and associated wetlands and abutting uplands, which this property has, along those streams are important corridors for wildlife movement. Numerous species use those, those corridors along streams to travel from larger conservation areas to other conserva- conserved and forested areas. So we're protecting an important wildlife corridor here too by, uh, by protecting this relatively small but important property.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Voden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Chairman Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-two-zero.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I think I just... We really appreciate your efforts out there. We, we appreciate what Don Tucker has, has, has done in terms of how his stewardship of the land and how he's passed it along. And, uh, you know, generations to come will have a, a beautiful area that, you know, it's not greatly developed, but it's there, and that's a wonderful thing to get to.
Absolutely.
We'll make sure the council's notified of the field trip.
Yes. Thank you.
We are very fortunate to be working with a very willing landowner and also with the Southeast Land Trust to help make this happen. We, we couldn't do it alone as a Conservation Commission. It's a, it's a great partnership.
We all have gratitude for what you're all, what you all have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So going to page three. Ordinance number three, twenty-eighteen dash two nineteen. Now could I have a, um, motion to approve this ordinance, which is amendments to chapter thirty-two zoning, section thirty-two, two thirty-eight. Impact fees are from municipal code of the town of New Market and zoning ordinance adopted two-fourteen nineteen ninety-six as amended through October eighteen twenty-seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
And Diane, is that you?
That's me.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to address the council?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Um, I'm here on behalf of the planning board, and the planning board is recommending for consideration by the town council to make some amendments to our zoning ordinance under the impact fee section. And, um, some of you may know, New Market has had an impact fee program for several years since two thousand and one, and it is, provides the town and the school district as, with a means of financing public facilities that are necessitated by growth and development in the community. We have four types of impact fees: schools, recreation, water, and wastewater systems. And there are, there is a section in our zoning ordinance pertaining to waivers where the planning board can waive, um, impact fees under certain circumstances. And we've had a lot of discussion lately about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And for some of the councillors who were here last year, we had a proposal to update the accessory dwelling unit provisions in the zoning ordinance because there was a state law that was passed that basically said that communities have to allow these types of units within residential zones as a way of promoting affordable housing and, um, addressing some of the needs of the aging population here in New Hampshire. And that was adopted, and I provided a copy of that. And I don't know if you'd like me to go over, uh, under wonder, under what circumstances ADOs are allowed. I can do that if you feel that's useful or helpful, maybe for the new members.
Sure.
Okay. So basically, um, in New Market, ADUs, accessory dwellings, are allowed in all zoning districts that allow residential, single-family housing. And in order to apply for an accessory apartment, one needs to go to the zoning board of adjustment and seek a special exception. And there are certain conditions that have to be met, and it's the zoning board's role to review those conditions to see if that application meets them. And there are certain conditions that have to be met. And just to briefly go over it, for instance, it can't be a minimum of three hundred square feet or a maximum of a thousand. There has to be an opportunity for a range of, uh, uh, options for housing, and the town is, cannot restrict it to just a studio or one bedroom. It has to allow for two-bedroom apartments. One of the units has to be owner-occupied, and, um, there needs to be a certain amount of parking to accommodate that need. And it has to, the exterior changes to the structure, the single-family home, have to be such that it's compatible with the character of the neighborhood. And there needs to be water and sewer provided. And there needs to be an interior door between the units, and you can't lock it. So anyway, that's basically, under those conditions, the zoning board grants the accessory apartments. And in recent years, it's, they've been very, very popular. We receive probably, I don't know, at least every zoning board meeting we seem to, or planning, and planning board meeting, we have a accessory apartment. And partly, it's because it provides a housing opportunity for people to age in place. And for those of you who have aging parents or have, um, family members who might have a disability, these really are a perfect solution to deal with the family situation. And I'll just sort of leave it on, on a positive note with that regard. Since I've been with the town, which is twelve years, I can't think of an instance where the planning board has not waived impact fees for accessory dwelling units. And partly is because they do not demand a lot of, in way of municipal services. And the process, there isn't anything specifically currently in the ordinance that provides that opportunity. And, um, we have had our legal counsel review our ordinance and advised us that in order for us to, um, you know, be in compliance with federal as well as state laws, we really should have that type of use recognized because there are instances where it's inappropriate for the planning board to grant them. And the planning board can't base it on whether or not, you know, there's four or five children that are going to be moving in, or whether or not someone is age fifty-five or so, because that violates federal fear housing laws. So Attorney Radigan actually reviewed the ordinance and recommended some language that one way of approaching this is to limit the number of bedrooms that are created so that the end, at the end of the day, the number before the ADU is equal to the number after the ADU is created. Because really, it's not so much housing units that drives impacts on municipal resources and services. It's the number of bedrooms that do. So the planning board drafted some language, and, um, we had a public hearing. And basically, um, before you is the language, and I'll just briefly go over it. And I do want to mention that the planning board did have a work session and a public hearing on this on March twentieth, and it was recommended to be brought forward for your consideration. So it's really simple. It's just adding another paragraph to the zoning ordinance on impact fees that states the planning board may waive impact fees where if it finds that a proposed dwelling unit will meet both of the following criteria. One, that it's being created from the conversion of existing finished living area. And secondly, that it will not increase the number of bedrooms on the property. And just for clarification, a studio ADU is considered a one-bedroom. And just for clarification, a studio ADU is considered a one-bedroom. So, that's basically what is being recommended by both the planning board and our town's legal counsel. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Have any questions from the council?
Can I, I, um...
Sure.
Um, can I just ask about the process, Diane?
Oh, sure.
How that works?
Yeah.
So, um, so what I'm understanding is that if a person wants a, a accessory dwelling unit in their, on their property, they have to come to the zoning board to get that approved.
A special exception, and that they can approve those after a public hearing and duly notifying the public and having public notice of it.
And then do they come to the planning board to have the impact fees waived?
Well, we've had many instances, we're, under the, the RSA, the planning board can waive impact fees, and that's their jurisdiction. So, we've had a lot of people come before saying, you know, "Really, this is not going to impact the town." And, you know, we're talking, we're talking about five thousand dollars of cost to a property owner in terms of impact fees associated with such a small unit. So, they come to the planning board, and again, they have to file a request for a waiver. And the planning board will review it and deliberate, just as you folks do on business before you, and, you know, a decision will be made. And I think this will give the planning board a tool to help clarify some of the gray areas in the law that we've had, and will make our process more streamlined. And I'm sure the people who are in a situation where this would apply will be very pleased that this will help to streamline it for them.
But it's not an automatic?
It is not an automatic. Now, somebody comes in, and the planning board feels very strongly that this is going to have some major impacts on the, on the school system or recreational facilities, and they debate that, and they're able to, you know, come up with some information to support that, and certainly they can deny it. But again, since I've been here, it hasn't happened once. There's been some debate about it, certainly, but, so, but it gives us a tool, and it, it helps put us on a stronger legal ground if there's ever a challenge.
Yeah, because, I mean, longer is longer. I think what's different is we changed, you know, changed in the last year, we changed it so that it was clearer that somebody, you know, if they meet the criteria, they can add on an, an ADU. I mean, you can, you know, the sort of, it's, it's been clarified that you can, you know, somebody could have a twelve or fourteen-hundred-foot, uh, house and put a thousand square foot Right. ADU on it. That, that's clearly something that somebody can do in this process.
Right.
And so you could have something that went from a two-bedroom to a four-bedroom fairly, fairly easy. And, and if it did, if it was a close to doubling of the, of the, of the dwelling and a doubling of the number of bedrooms, you could at that point make a case that, that a waiving of the impact fee, that wouldn't be covered by this language. We're not making it that, because it, because that, in that case, it wouldn't be a, a conversion of existing finished areas, it would be addition of new finished areas. So, then it would be on the purview of the planning board to decide, but they would be well within what's reasonable to say, no, this, this is where, a case where the impact fee makes sense.
We'd like to mention that we have had some discussions internally about how we would administer this, because, you know, the question always comes up, well, is it a bedroom or is it an office? And is this a legitimate case? And I think you and I talked about that, Chairman Pike. And I just wanted to assure you that we have come up with some ideas that make sense, one of which is as part of the application process. We asked them to give us a copy of the assessment card, and lo and behold, on our assessment card records, it says the number of bedrooms, in effect. So, we have some formal record of the town that shows what the existing is. The other option, or the other idea was to, you know, require some detailed plan showing the layout of the, the house before and the layout afterwards with labeling of what are the bedrooms and what aren't, and that be part of the application process. And, you know, if there are questions, the planning board always has the option to do a sit walk and the zoning board as well, you know, with the owner being present, and they can confirm the conditions. And a last idea we had was to, you know, have some kind of certification that if in the future the applicant feels that there's a change in their situation and they want to revert it back, or they want to add another bedroom, that they would then have to come back to the town to have the application be revisited. So, you know, we thought that that approach would make sense, because, I mean, enforcement could be a problem, because you can't really go into private homes and say, "Wait a minute, we don't think that you're using that as a, an office," or, you know, "That's a bedroom, and you're violating, circumventing the law." So, anyway, I think, you know, I think we're in a good position to administer it, it's not going to be burdensome from an administrative standpoint, and I think it like, makes a lot of sense. And I appreciate the good work the planning board did in coming to a consensus on what the language should be. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Anything else?
I see no other comments or questions. Please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Chairman Pike.
Aye.
Motion carries seven two zero.
Okay, and then we move on to page one ninety-five. You guys are all faster than me. Sometimes this does, restarts and takes me to a place where I don't want to be. Okay. Resolution twenty seventeen eighteen dash forty-two, and this is the purchase of a Ford Taurus unmarked cruiser for the police department and to include costs associated with the replacement of emergency lighting and equipment setup. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen twenty eighteen dash forty-two. Second.
Sir.
And I have an idea that this is yours, Chief Trove.
Sir.
Come out here in the hot seat.
All right.
So, I'm looking to replace a two thousand and five Ford Taurus Crown, I'm sorry, a two thousand and five Crown Victoria that is, it's obviously a thirteen-year-old vehicle. We've run into some maintenance issues with it. Although it has low miles, the, the vehicle is seeing significant rot underneath. Last year, we had to put the vehicle out of service because a detective sitting in traffic could smell fuel. We learned that the fuel rails holding the gas tank had rotted out, so we had to sideline the vehicle and replace the gas tank and the, and the fuel rails. This year, speaking to Auto Excellence, the vehicle will, if we were to keep it, we would need to replace the transmission lines as well as the fuel lines, as they are also rusted. Has severe rust underneath the vehicle, and it would cost about twenty hundred dollars to do that work to get it, get it just to pass inspection. The question always comes up, i- if we were to get rid of this two thousand and five, would we pass it along to another department head? And I would recommend that we not keep this vehicle even in the community, that we send it to the state auction and try to get something out of it.
Hope it never comes back, in other words.
But the, I'm sorry?
And hope it never comes back.
Hope it never comes back. Uh, the vehicle that I'm looking to replace, the two thousand and five with, is a brand-new two thousand and eighteen Ford Taurus, which has taken place of the Crown Victoria. It will be a unmarked vehicle used by detectives. It will not be lettered. It will not have cage or the bells and whistles. It will have a radio, it will have basic lights in the front and basic lights in the rear. It will have a siren in emergency situations. As you can see, the, the cost from, uh, Gropone Ford was twenty-five thousand, that's a state The cost to set the vehicle up would total, with the cost of the vehicle, would total thirty thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. This money, this vehicle would be purchased from the police department's detail revolving account, which is separate from capital reserve. This, this is funds that we set up about a decade ago to help offset the cost of buying vehicles. So, when you see a police officer working a detail, a portion of the billing from the private company goes to the town in this account. Through this account. Be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I should talk about the, the bid that I'm requesting the company to outfit it. This year, the lowest bid out of the three that I requested, I requested one from Ospey Mount Electronics, who got last year's bid. I requested one from Two Way Communication, and one from Adamson. And Two Way Communication in Newington was the lowest this year, which is thrilling to me, not having to drive to Ospey to have these vehicles outfitted. It would be my recommendation that we go with Two Way Communication.
Counselor Dumont.
Thank you.
Yep.
In regards to the equipment that you plan on outfitting, the lights, the radio, the siren?
Sure.
What happens with the old stuff on the current vehicle? Are you not able to reuse that and push it over to the new vehicle?
We're not able to, this is one of the radios that, the police radio that's in it is, it's antiquated and it's, it's unsupported by Motorola right now. So, if it breaks, we're in trouble, we'd have to go and buy a new radio. So, as we're doing this work, we thought it was a, the right time to replace the radio. And fortunately, due to a Motorola screw-up, Rockingham County is benefiting from a fifty percent off on all Motorola radios, so I'd like to jump on board with that. With regards to the lights, those lights would be put in a box, put in the back of the car and sold at auction.
Okay.
So, to whoever would buy it, maybe a correctional facility would buy it.
Sure.
Sure.
Uh, can you?
I can call it from here.
You can call it from there. Please do.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Chairman Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven two zero.
Do they have a question on that, counsel, real quick? Says, "Where is the total cost for the vehicle, an unmarked vehicle, right?"
Yes.
"The total vehicle and related equipment to include lettering, it estimates not to exceed thirty thousand, six oh nine, sixty-nine."
Although it says that, I can tell you tonight that the vehicle will not be lettered whatsoever.
So, using boilerplate language. Okay. Uh, resolution twenty seventeen eighteen dash forty-three, purchase of a Ford Interceptor SUV for the police department to include costs associated with the placement and/or transferal of emergency lighting and equipment setup. Could I please have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen twenty eighteen dash forty-three.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Uh, Counselor Bowden. I got it.
Thank you. Uh, this vehicle that, um, this is a line car, and when I say line car, this is one of the black and white SUVs that you see our officers in every day. The vehicle that I would like to replace is a two thousand and fourteen SUV. It has, as of yesterday, it had approximately a hundred and three thousand miles on it. By the time the new vehicle is purchased and outfitted, I'm, we'd be looking around August, we'd be upwards of probably a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and thirteen thousand miles. And that's on the conservative end. The, this vehicle that I would like to replace, we have, it's beyond its warranty, and beyond warranty items, we have spent twenty-eight hundred dollars on items to fix the vehicle. I'm sorry, forty-nine hundred dollars on items to fix the vehicle beyond warranty.
Is that all repairs, or is that included?
That's wear and tear, that's brakes, that's rotors, that's oil changes.
Something you'd expect.
Sure. It's, it's average, everyday wear and tear.
Oil changes are in that, too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The, the good thing about replacing this vehicle is the items from the old vehicle, this two thousand and fourteen, can be removed and put into the new vehicle. Now, last year, when I, and I came before you to outfit a brand-new car, it, it cost about seventeen thousand dollars with equipment, lights, radios. That's not the case this time. We're simply, uh, the lowest bid on, on outfitting the car was Two Way Communication again. Again, three bids, one from Adamson, one from Ospey Mount, and one from Two Way. The lowest bid was, uh, Two Way Communication, and to remove all, via, all items out of the two thousand and fourteen and put into the two thousand and eighteen would be two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So, you can see there's a significant savings when we can reuse items from one car to another. The radio that's in this vehicle can go into the new vehicle, which is a, which is a great cost savings for us. The cage can be reused, the trunk box can be reused, the radar can be used, the tablet can be reused, the, the brackets can be used. What can't be reused is we have a push bumper on the front in case we need to push a car out of the way or, um, run something over. That push bar, uh, the one, the push bar from the two thousand and fourteen will not fit on a two thousand and eighteen, so I, I think it was, it, it's in here somewhere, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars to, to replace it. The cost of the, of the vehicle from Gropone, which again is a state bid, was twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two. The total cost to outfit the vehicle would be thirty-two thousand, forty-nine, and this money would be taken from the capital reserve fund. In the capital reserve fund, I believe I have two hundred and twenty-two thousand, approximately two hundred and twenty-two thousand in the capital reserve fund, so the money's there. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this vehicle. Uh, just a quick question about... Sure. I know we're replacing a lot of the Motorola radios because of the, the bands and stuff, but the radio in this vehicle is... It's good. Good to go. Yes. For it, okay. I, I, I would love to get a new one, just, just because I'm nervous, but I've been told by Two Way Communication that that is the most up-to-date radio that they have out right now.
Counselor Weinstein.
Um, so in your, in the staff report...
Sure.
It says that, somewhere, okay, that we typically replace vehicles, or keep, keep vehicles between four and, and ten years. And so this is obviously on the low end of that?
Yes.
And I was just wondering if you could talk to that a little bit?
Absolutely. That's a good question. So, what we try to do is, we try to purchase at least one vehicle a year, but on the third year, in the rotation, we try to replace two vehicles. One vehicle being a line car, the other vehicle being an unmarked car. So, the unmarked cars that we have, we have three right now. We have the vehicle that I drive, which is a two thousand and nine Ford Taurus, we have a two thousand and eight Ford Expedition, and we have the two thousand and five Crown Victoria. So, every third year, we would try to replace one of those unmarked vehicles. The unmarked vehicles, we try to keep for ten years minimum, because they get less wear and tear, they're sitting a lot more, or they're driving to Concord, to the state lab, or they're driving to court. Whereas the black and white line cars are constantly running, they're, so they don't have a longer lifespan, and they take a little bit more of a beating than a detective's car would. Constant turning around, backing up, forward. So, and this vehicle that I would be getting rid of, there is a place here in the community for that vehicle, as opposed to being sent to the, the state auction. So, not in my department, in, in another department. And obviously, we would take the lettering off and paint it, or have that department paint it.
Yeah, do you, I mean, it, it does, I'm just gonna, because I had a kind of a similar question, which is a very general one, but, you know, when I look at what's happened over the last twenty years in terms of how long a vehicle lasts in terms of miles, they, they last markedly. I mean, I used to think I was lucky if I got seventy, eighty thousand miles out of a vehicle, and now it's, you know, it's approaching triple that on one of the vehicles I'm driving. Is, do you see that kind of change happening, or is it, is, does this look like the right frequency of, of, of changing out vehicles as far as you can see in the future?
I, I think historically in policing, it's, we've always tried to change vehicles out between ninety-five thousand and a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Line cars, cars that we put our police officers in who are responding with blue lights and sirens, we want to make sure that they're safe. I owe it to them to make sure that they're safe. So, New Market historically has, has traded their vehicles within the, within the norm, between ninety-five and, and a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Personally, my personal vehicle, I, I, I'm in your, the same way with you, I, two hundred thousand miles out of it, but it's a different type of driving.
Right.
Black and white cars take a beating.
I see no other comments. Please call the roll. I see no other comments, please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Chairman Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I will rejoin you.
And I think our last is Resolution 2017 18-45, Adoption of the Newmarket in Hampshire Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2018, which is on page nine. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017 2018-45.
Second.
And is there somebody who is going to make comments to that? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, counselors. My name is Kopp Mental. I'm the principal regional planner at Stratford Regional Planning Commission, and the town administrator asked me to come in and just give a little bit of background about the hazard mitigation update. So I'll talk a little bit about hazard mitigation planning, the town process that we went through, some of the more significant changes that happened, or we updated in the plan since 2013, and then next steps moving forward. So to give you a little bit of background, in the year 2000, Congress adopted the Disaster Mitigation Act, which basically authorized federal funding for the development of state and local hazard mitigation plans. Currently, Congress requires that all local governments have an approved plan in order to receive any sort of federal funding. So, especially when you're applying for federal disaster funding. So the one thing to notice here is that there's a big difference between pre-disaster funding and post-disaster funding. So if a community doesn't have a hazard mitigation plan in place and there's a natural disaster that happens, they can still receive federal funding post-disaster. However, if they don't have a plan in place and they want to do something pre-disaster, like fixing a culvert, or purchasing radios, or things like that, and they don't have a plan in place, they are not allowed to receive federal funding. So that's the distinction. Like I mentioned, funding like this has been used by emergency personnel throughout a lot of different communities. New equipment, updating radios, replacing undersized culverts, conducting any sort of outreach, purchasing flood insurance materials. And because of these types of funding opportunities, New Hampshire is one of the most compliant states in the country. The last time I checked, there were 231 out of 234 communities that either have an adopted plan or that they're in the process of adopting. So the primary purpose of, of a plan like this, it's for a community to get together, a road agent, emergency personnel, town planner, the emergency management director, and to look at the different types of hazards that can impact the town, determine what their vulnerability is, and start thinking about what the long, some long-term strategies to sort of mitigate against those or reduce their risk. The plans are meant to be evolving documents. They should be reviewed by the EMD before any significant event, before or after any event, and then they have to be looked at every five years. So a plan like this, it's, there's a life cycle. I'll talk a little bit about that at the end, but from the five year, there's five years from the point that it's adopted, and then that plan will eventually expire. So right now, Newmarket's plan is actually expired. It expired February 1st of this year. So a lot of that has to do with the fact that going through Homeland Security, getting things updated takes a lot of time. The town was really great about meeting. We met four times in, I think, two months, so we were really quick to, to get it through. We also didn't get our funding until late in the fall, so things were backed up a little bit. To talk a little bit about the town process, we received $7,500 from Homeland Security. That was from a FEMA grant. As part of that, the town's contributions had to be $2,500 in in-kind match, so there was no cash that was associated with this. It was the community, the committee that was put together, their time with reviewing materials, meeting those four times, we met that $2,500. We actually exceeded that. Once the, the funding was in place, the town had an opportunity to pick their consultant. They could choose anyone they want. They decided to work with the Planning Commission again. We've, we've worked with them in the past and wrote their last two plans. So once the, the SRPC was chosen, between myself and the EMD, we organized a committee. There were six people that participated in that committee. You can see that's referenced on, if you have it in front of you, it's referenced on page two. You can see the, the people that were there. We met four times from December 6th to January 24th. All meetings are open to the public, so it was noticed on our website, it was also noticed on the town's website. And then some of the responsibilities of the committee, really their job was to provide me with some local knowledge, some perspective on, on what their, their biggest concerns were, what sort of things happened in the last five years. I know, for instance, a really good example was in 2013, when we adopted this, we were coming out of the 2006 and 2007 flooding events, so there was a lot to talk about, you know, in that update. Not as much. We had Sandy, Irene, not major impacts for Newmarket. We also had some other big storms. They started naming snowstorms in this next update, Juneau and Nemo, I think were the first in 12 and 13. But no, nothing, nothing major like we saw in 2007, 2007 and 2006. I'll highlight some of the significant changes. So every, every couple of years, FEMA changes their guidance a little bit. So these plans are, are put together and developed in accordance to what they have, they have a crosswalk. And all the elements that are in the plan, they, they need to be there for certain elements, certain checkboxes. So the plan that you have in front of you has met all of those. Homeland Security's already, already reviewed it, they've already given conditional approval. So everything that FEMA wants to see is already in your plan. Going through the chapter, the community profile, that wasn't in your existing or your 2013 plan, so new land use data that came out, we used 2015 data as opposed to 2010, which we had before. New housing data, we looked at development trends. We reviewed the town's critical infrastructure and key resources, so there are five different tables on pages 22 to 24. We broke those out into emergency response facilities, non-emergency response facilities, critical infrastructure, vulnerable populations, and water resources. The committee decided which ones that we were going to put into the plan. All of those were mapped, however, some of them were not put on the public maps. So there are two sets of maps that we created, things like where the well sites are, those are not on the public maps. Those are only on the maps for the town. The ones that will go on the website, the ones that will eventually go to Homeland Security, don't have those, certain resources on there were not mapped for those. We also looked at the town's flood insurance policies, how many, how many residents have flood insurance, what were some of the paid losses over the last few years. Also looked at how the town is staying compliant within the flood insurance program. Just to give you a few examples, there's integration of climate resiliency in the town's vision for their master plan that was done two or three years ago. The Horsley-Witten project, looking at Moonlight Brook. The Sea Rise project would look at vulnerability to sea level rise, and also the Stormwater Project on New Road. We also reassessed each one of the hazards, so we used the vulnerability tool that is now a requirement. Two new hazards were added, cyber attacks and coastal flooding. So the flooding was always addressed in the 2013 plan, but now we separated riverine flooding to looking at coastal flooding that would have more of an impact from sort of future projections and storm surge. We looked at all the new federally declared and emergency declarations that have happened in the last five years. Each hazard now has a new write-up, a description, extent, past hazards. Also looking at potential future impacts and potential losses. Each one of those write-ups has graphics, pictures, charts. It's a lot more user-friendly. There's a lot of information there. It's probably, it's right in the center of the plan. It's the longest section of the plan, goes for about 30, 35 pages or so. But if you want to know about the hazards that may impact the community, it's a really good resource to look through. We also looked at what the town had accomplished since the plan in 2013. There were 12 actions that the town wanted to complete. The town completed seven of those. Three were rolled over into the new plan, and then two were removed for whatever reasons, either that they weren't seen as being a necessity anymore, or there wasn't, you know, the will to move those forward. But seven out of 12 were accomplished. And then the last two things that we looked at, we looked at existing mitigation items, things like the town's flood plain ordinance, building codes, mutual aid, everything that already exists, how is that functioning? Is it effective or not? How can we make improvements to that? And then lastly, we looked at new mitigation actions. Through that, when those ideas came out, we had to use a FEMA-approved method for prioritization. It's called the Stapley Method. You can, you can look at those on pages 76 and 77, and then put that all together in an implementation plan, talks about who's responsible for that, the funding, is it cost-effective, and a timeframe. What we'd like to see is that, is the actions fit within the lifespan of, of a plan, so not something that the town's going to do 10 years from now, but something that the town will at least attempt to start in on between now and the next five years. In terms of where we are in next steps, we submitted the plan for a conditional approval in January 11th. Homeland Security reviewed that plan and gave us conditional approval on March 23rd. One important note to, with that, in terms of Homeland Security, New Hampshire's only the second state in the country to allow their, the state to review these plans. Florida is the other one, and that's important because after events like Sandy, it was taking communities a lot of time going through FEMA. When, if FEMA has to review all the hazard mitigation plans, they have to do all the grant administration, it was taking a lot of time to recover. So New Hampshire now allows our State Department, Homeland Security and Emergency Management, to review their plans and provide assistance, and we don't have to go to FEMA. Sometimes it would take months to sort of get the plans back and conditionally approved, and with this, it was January 11th to March 23rd. So even then, it was still a decent amount of time, but with FEMA, it's much, much longer. Next steps will be for the council to adopt the plan, the resolution, there should be a draft in your packet, and once that's done, it will go back to FEMA for final approval. So we've got conditional approval, then the town adopts it, and then it will get final approval from FEMA. You'll have three different dates on your plan, the final date, the final approval letter, that's the start life of your plan. So it will expire five years from that date. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Cast.
So the prior plan has expired, you said?
Yes.
And are we in a period right now until this one's finally approved where we're not eligible for that funding that you mentioned?
Correct. So if you were to apply for any pre-disaster funding, the town would not be eligible for that right now.
I don't remember if you explained why we have this gap.
Sure. So we, it, the funding didn't come through governor and council from FEMA to Homeland Security until, I think it was about August or September. And we had four communities to do both, two of them, their expiration dates were early February. Just with the timing of the fall, the first time that we could actually get that committee together was December. And then we're now, we submitted it in January, it took two months to get it back, and now with first reading, second reading, it's just, it takes a little bit longer. But mostly, it was because the funding got pushed back about two months. Right now, you're not really, there's, at this point, once the town adopts it, you will get your final approval from Homeland Security fairly quickly, I would say, within a couple of weeks, and then you'll get your final letter. But once you get it from Homeland Security, it should be about two weeks or so. And I, the other thing I'll say too, is that this does happen a lot with that overlap. We just, we get more concerned when it's four, five, six months out.
Sure.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry, Counsel Bowden?
So there's no way this could have been done two, three months earlier?
I mean, I guess we, there's a possibility that we could have started in September or October, but just given the schedules with the community and the committee, it got pushed back till December.
Whose responsibility would that be to address that with, I guess?
With the committee getting organized?
Yes.
I mean, a lot of the responsibility was mine and the town administrator. The two of us were working together to put together that committee.
Sorry, I got a question. Um, in the future, because this is good for five years, right? How early could we plan out? So, I mean, because obviously we missed the initial deadline. Can we do it nine months in advance or a year in advance? Would it make sense to book it earlier in the year versus?
Again, it all depends on the funding. So Homeland Security gets funding from FEMA for plans that are going to expire over the course of two years. So the disaster funding that, or the pre-disaster funding that we got is actually 2016 money. It's just the way that that sort of filters down, it takes, it takes a while for it to go through the correct channels, for it to filter down from the Fed, down to the state level, down to the Planning Commission, down to getting the community ready. So it's, it just takes a lot longer than, so the, the answer to that is, you can't plan any faster than the funding available unless the community wants to pay for it on their own, then they can start as early as they want.
Well, I guess, I guess then, when should the community start looking for that funding? Should it be late 2022 or early 2023?
Well, the community doesn't actually really look for it. It's Homeland Security that, that secures it for the communities. What the communities have to do is they have to pick their consultant, but the, the community itself doesn't have to apply. It's the state that gets the funding.
So we can't really be too proactive then?
No. Again, unless, unless the community wanted to have an outside source of funding, but if you were waiting for the pre-disaster or whatever funding comes from the state, you, you really have to wait for their schedule.
Diana, we wanted to make a
I just wanted to comment that the town of Newmarket doesn't have any pre-disaster projects that are ready to go that would have been effective, so it's really a moot issue whether we're a couple of months behind, because as Kyle said, if there's a disaster, we can still apply for that funding and be eligible.
Right. These are only for projects.
Right. We, we don't have anything on our capital improvement plan that qualifies for the pre-disaster funding that Kyle is mentioning, so the question of the timing is really a moot issue.
Right. Because we'd have the flexibility. If we wanted to apply for pre-disaster funding, we wouldn't, we would just be able to move
We don't have any projects
Right. Right. And the pre-disaster funding, that process is probably three months to do that application. It takes a long time, and when those funds become available, they're, you'd know well in advance. There's actually no pre-disaster funding right now that's even available. So it's, I mean, it's really depends on the program, on when that funding becomes available.
Is Counsel Cast.
Sorry for opening that can of worms. I realized right after that, you know, it was probably mitigated, so, but I have another question about, once it's adopted, I see there's a number of, you know, projects on here. How do those move forward exactly?
Uh, so each one of the actions that are identified in the implementation plan should have a responsible party, which we discussed and had consensus with, that that would be the lead for moving that particular project forward. At this point, it's, it's the town's responsibility to look at those actions and decide which ones are most important to, to accomplish first. It's also going to depend on what funding, what resources, you know, the town's capacity. But once the plan is adopted, it's really, it's, it's up to the town to adopt some of those. If there are certain actions that there are other partners that the town needs to sort of accomplish those, one of those might be the Lubberlin Creek Project. That's something that, you know, the Planning Commission or other outside entities can help with, but for the most part, most of the actions can be accomplished by the town.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify that there is an application that's being drafted by the nature of conservancy? The application is due the end of this month in April, so that the The application is due the end of this month in April, so that the town, if they get funding on that program, will benefit. It's not FEMA money.
Right.
It's money through another federal source, interstate source. So, that project, we hope, will go forward soon.
Counsel Boden?
Quick question. Just trying to figure what is, what can be included in this. I guess, thinking about things that have been going on in the world, somebody were to walk into here, walk into a school with a gun, would something like that be covered?
So, that's a really good point. So, we actually had that discussion, and some, some communities are starting to add that into their hazard plans, sort of active shooter issues. However, the conversations that we've had at the local level is that there's another plan that the town has, is their emergency operations plan, that might be a better fit to handle those types of situations. And I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, but the emergency operations plan would be something that, that's in the case, something that you're talking about, sort of an active shooter event, that would be better referenced in that plan as opposed to sort of the natural hazards piece.
Did you want to say anything?
I'm not going to speak about the emergency operations plan. There is a plan in place, but I'm not going to speak about it with regard to, if you're referring to whether or not we'd receive funding for, as a result of an active shooter, it wouldn't fall under our emergency, our emergency response plan. No, it would fall under something like this, I think, is the question you were asking, correct?
Yeah, would it fall under?
And I don't know if, I don't know if New Market actually designated that type of incident as part of.
As part of their.
Plan.
But it's certainly something that you could add into, into this plan.
Counsel Cast.
One more question. So, when, let's see, is it FEMA? No. Homeland, who approves it? FEMA or Homeland?
Homeland Security gives us conditional approval, and then FEMA will give us final.
Okay. And I assume they're looking at what we have implemented versus what we've eliminated versus what we've tabled forward as part of that approval process?
Yeah. So, part of their, that crosswalk, they need to see, what did the town do? You know, what do they want to do in the future? And then an explanation on why the town didn't accomplish certain things.
So, we do need to continue to look and plan to do some of these things to Diane's point that the town, or you were saying the town would be doing these things?
Yep.
So, we need to be cognizant of that.
Yep.
For future plan submissions.
Right.
And approval.
The other, the other good thing too is the conversation that we had with the planning team was that if you put a project or, you know, an action item into your hazard mitigation plan, not to say that it's going to automatically be funded, but if you do apply for certain funding and you can reference that it's in this plan, it's same, similar if it's in a master plan or a CIP, it may give you extra points in terms of it ranking a little bit higher if they can see that this has already been identified.
It's good to know. Thank you.
The only comment I was going to make too is that there are, there are things that don't go in this, you know, maybe perhaps in terms of adaptation to climate change. I was thinking about some of the things that aren't in this because they don't sort of represent acute emergencies, but they, they may end up being referenced in some other plan. And I think you, it's referred to in this, that there are, there'll be multiple plans within the town that could be, you know, affected by climate change, could be affected by something. So, you know, it's, it's not a single plan that covers everything that the town has to monitor or adapt to. I don't see anybody else, so perhaps we can call the roll at this point.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Chairman Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right. And the last is page 256, all right?
Just wanted to say thanks for their work, the committee's work on that.
Yes.
The work.
Yeah. Thanks for your job.
Appreciate it.
Comprehensive, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And we get to work with Kyle kind of bit on things. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would accept a motion to nominate David Irwin Smith as a cemetery trustee for a term that expires March 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Okay. And I don't know if anybody has any comments relative to Mr. Smith's willingness to serve?
Thank you for your willingness. Was that you?
That's me.
Okay.
Okay. I was. Some people are just fascinated with the chance to hear us, but please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Chairman Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And thank you very much.
My work last night is invalid.
Okay.
I attended the trustee meeting last night.
Oh.
So, I got myself heat wet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can go home.
Okay. There are no, is there any correspondence to the town council? Is there any closing comments by town councillors?
Counsel Weinstein.
I have a couple items. So, the first is the roadside cleanup is happening on the 29th, which is a week from Sunday. People can, if they're interested in participating in that, they can just show up at the elementary school at noon. Or at eight, the right time. I don't even know the right time. I'll get that information. Or they can email me at tonyweinstein@gmail.com. Is it one o'clock? Thank you. So, at 12:45 is when we'll meet at the, at the elementary school. The other item that I have is an event that Patty Marsden from the New Market Community Church has started to organize, and it's the first annual New Market Cares Day, and I'm helping her out with some of the projects. The idea is that she's bringing together volunteers throughout the community and pairing them with projects and needs throughout the community. Some of those might be town-related projects, but some of them are also private projects. So, an elderly person may have some yard work that they need done, or they may have a basement that needs to be cleaned out. We're looking at possibly doing some work at Shanda Park, maybe doing some work through the Conservation Commission. So, those are the types of things that we're looking at. So, I have a flyer. So, again, it's May 11th, 11:30 to 5 is the timing. One of the reasons for that is it coincides with a, with some school, because it's a, it's a Friday. So, it coincides with, I believe, a half day of school. So, the kids will be available, the high school will be available to help out. So, I have some information, so people can contact the church if they are interested in participating on either end. So, either as a volunteer or if they know someone who needs some support, some services. So, I will pass that out to everyone, and that's it. That's all I have.
I just have a quick one. Just to reiterate the Thiscasic Loizel sign is going up. It's beautiful. It's got the trail map. That'll be up on Saturday morning, hopefully by about 9:30. So, if you're looking to get outside, hopefully it's a nice weekend, that trail sign will be up, and it's all this weekend. That's it.
Counsel Dumont?
For those of you who might not be aware, there were two public hearings last week regarding Wildcat Transit Route 5, New Market Bus Service. They're looking at getting rid of all of the weekend service as of right now and cutting off the Bennett Way section of their bus route, and that would be through all of their weekday and weekend routes as well. I'm told that at the first meeting, there were about eight people. At the second meeting, which I was able to go to at the library, there were 11. They were all town residents and state rep as well. There was some noticeable concern for the non-motor vehicle-owning members of our town. I just wanted to put it out there that I personally, full disclosure, I am an employee of Wildcat Transit. I'm working on ways to try to keep some of that weekend service going on. However, I know that there has been concern by our residents. I know that State Rep Cahill had reached out to all of us. There's some question about whether or not there might be a line item in the budget for coast funding for their Route 7, which is no longer active. I don't know anything about that, and I'm going to do a little bit of work to see what I can dig up there. But I also know that there's been a large push by some of the residents, especially over on Bennett Way for the two complexes, three complexes that are out there, to try to get some of the property owners to help pitch in a little bit to help their lessees. So, I just wanted to put it out there, make you all aware. If you have any questions, love to hear back from you, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I see no other hands raised, so at this point, I think we are adjourned till the first week in May, first Wednesday in May. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to call to.
Yeah. Thank you.